Mr. President, as that type of public hearing, ordinance in chapter 410 of the Code of Ordinances was issued by the Department of Transportation in 1996 to establish a zoning district of the Coates Thread district. As well as the ordinance in chapter 410 of the Code of Ordinances was issued by the Department of Transportation in 1996 to establish a zoning, change an official zoning map of the Coates Thread district. I would be happy to hear and be convened.
Motion made by Councilor Mursec, by Councilor Udo, by Councilor Vitale. The public hearing be convened. Regarding an ordinance amendment of chapter 410 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pawtucket in 1996 entitled zoning, establishment of a Coates Thread zoning district. In an ordinance amendment of chapter 410 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pawtucket in 1996 entitled zoning, change an official zoning map of the Coates Thread district. Motion to convene a public hearing. I think we have some people here representing the city. Sue?
Yes, thank you.
Jean?
So, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Susan Mara. I'm the planning director for the City of Pawtucket. With us tonight is also Jean Boyle, our conference director, and our assistant director of planning, Jay Rosen. And we brought the whole team tonight because this is a really big night for us. How long have we been working on this train station project? Ten years, fifteen years? So I think the city willing us to invest that amount of time and energy into the development out there speaks to the fact that we understand that this significant public investment could help to redevelop the area around the station, including hundreds of thousands of square feet of vacant and underutilized space. Relationalize the downtown and also connect protected residents in multiple urban and rural neighborhoods with opportunities for education and employment. So, the project thinking reality in 2016 when DOT got some federal funding, it was called Tiger Funding, the city council supported us in that application. So in 2016, the project became a reality because we were able to pay for it. As soon as that happened, we, the City of Pawtucket, City of Central Falls, DOT, Ripta, and a number of other state and local partners began dealing regularly around this issue. You know, we understood that this public investment could really help to lift our cities. But we also understood that, in our research, one of the main predictors of how beneficial an investment like this is is whether the cities have the land use regulations in place to support the kind of redevelopment that we want to see. So we understood at the very beginning that this TOD zoning is very, very important and started to work on that. We're using the word TOD kind of thrown around, but making sure that everybody understands what exactly that means. So transit-oriented development is a type of urban development that maximizes the amount of residential, commercial, and leisure space within walking distance of public transportation. TOD aims to increase the public transportation ridership by reducing the use of private automobiles and also promoting sustainable urban growth. I use the definition from Wikipedia because it just feels worse instead of a lot of jargon from some of the other ones. But I just, I want to make sure that everyone here understands what it is that we're trying to do here. So, one of the first acts that we did was to identify what our transit-oriented development district was. And so when we first identified it, it wasn't a zoning district. It was just sort of the area that we're looking at, that we thought made most sense to dig deeper into and to incentivize for redevelopment. Probably can't see that, so maybe they won't remember, so they'll get the same. So the district which the council has seen is about altogether 140 acres, about 100 parcels in Pawtucket and about 100 acres in Pawtucket. In Central Falls, there are about 30 properties and about 40 acres. So I heard someone say it's about 50/50, but it's not. It's about 75% Pawtucket, roughly 25% Central Falls. And when we identified the area around the train station, you know, one of the things you could have done was just put a pin in where the train station is going and do a circle that was, you know, half mile away. Because that's sort of the metric that a lot of planners use for transit-oriented development because that's the distance that people are comfortable walking. So, you know, half mile, quarter mile, three quarters of a mile. But we did not do that. Instead, what we did is we made parcel by parcel and tried to identify the areas in the Coates Thread district and also to the south of the train station that were ready for redevelopment. We deliberately did not include the surrounding neighborhoods because we were trying to identify properties that are vacant and underutilized and we wanted to try and put our resources towards redeveloping those properties. So, in May 2017, the city council, working with us, established our joint planning commission by resolution. Central Falls did the same. In October 2017, the planning commission from Pawtucket and the planning commission from Central Falls start, you know, having met as this joint planning commission, established their rules and procedure. So they organized themselves, they talked about, you know, how they're going to vote, how they're going to decide, how they're going to work together. And this is revolutionary, right? Like, there's no other ones in Rhode Island. This is a big deal. And so it's something that I think both cities are going to be very proud of. So the JPC must say, kind of organized themselves, went to work with Pawtucket and Central Falls planning committees. We worked with a consultant on our comprehensive plan and also our zoning proposals. We worked with a historic preservation consultant to identify, you know, to identify and characterize all of the historic benefits of the Coates Thread, Coates and Clark National Registered Districts. There's also the James Spinningville District out there. There's a lot of important historic properties out there. Not all of them are as important as, you know, all of them. So we looked at a way to sort of understand the historic character and which properties are prioritized and which maybe aren't. Just, you know, because we're understanding that development might look a little bit of demolition. We worked with the DEM to assist in characterizing the environmental conditions in the district. The reason we did that is because we're trying to incentivize redevelopment of these properties, which I've taken for, you know, 20 years, 30 years, understanding what the environmental conditions are and hopefully putting, you know, developers in contact with some resources to, you know, clean those properties is something that we thought was important to sort of take the first step on. We developed design guidelines for private development and for public development. We worked with the foundation on a marketing strategy. I'm sure, hopefully, you've all gone to the Coates Thread website. It's a good-looking website. And I don't know if anybody saw the valley greasy, those good-looking signs that we're going to be installing in and around the district. And so that was, you know, we thought that was important too because we're going to be talking with developers who live, you know, not just in Rhode Island, but outside of Rhode Island, outside of the region and being able to talk about this district as a place and to make people understand what the potential is. We worked also with DOT and Ripta on the development of the plans and the specifications of the actual station and worked with the selection of the contractor. So in September 2018, you know, based on a lot of the work we did with the JPC, both of the councils, particularly in Central Falls, adopted TOD comprehensive plan amendments by ordinance. Those ordinances provide the basis for the zone changes that we're reviewing tonight. In November 2018, there was a groundbreaking at the train station. So that was a very exciting event where, you know, we got out with the shuttles and, you know, sort of was the first time, I think, that, you know, the project is officially under construction after talking about it for years and years. So this work that we've done with the JPC, with the two cities, also the progress that the project has made has already yielded visible and positive results for our communities. We've been able to bring in a million dollars in state and federal funding with a potential for $800,000 of additional funding, not to mention the half a million dollars that we committed locally to improving the streets, sidewalks, street treats, ADA accessibility, all around the station. And the purpose of these improvements is to connect the neighborhoods to the station. These are pedestrian improvements that are intended to make the entire district more walkable, more viable, safer. The other thing is that we are seeing some interest in development and that's, you know, we feel like that's a good thing. So all of the work that we've done up until this point has already started to yield some, you know, positive energy. So where we are to connect is we are creating several districts, Coates Thread zoning ordinance. And the goals of this ordinance are the same as we reviewed and approved in the comprehensive plan amendment that we did last year. To encourage incentivized preservation and the reuse of historical structures, to encourage mixed uses which promote activity, discourage low-activity uses like self-storage, to streamline the review process, and to provide clear upfront expectations for potential developers. So tonight you have before you two ordinances. There's the text version and there's also the map, and they go together. So the text version establishes the district and then the map version will just show you in the ordinance and list by property which properties are subject to this zone change. We stole pretty freely from both the commercial downtown existing zoning district and the middle building reuse district. So when we sat down with Central Falls, you know, we didn't start with the light slate. You know, both cities looked at our current ordinances and identified ordinances in zone districts and policies that worked really well. So we started from there. So although the zoning ordinance is new, it has a lot of the elements that were already in place in both our commercial downtown district and our middle building reuse district. So, I'm going to talk through the ordinance that you have in front of you. I'm not going to read through it, but I'll just identify some of the highlights. And when I'm done, maybe if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them. So, the first thing it does is establish the Coates Thread district as our TOD district. So there's a couple sections where it states the purpose of the district or the goals of the district. The second thing we did was add a number of definitions for clarity. So those are definitions. Our regular zoning ordinance, Central Falls regular zoning ordinance, has a definition section. We're adding to both of those with these definitions. The other thing we're doing is describing the permitting process. So we've tried really hard to lay out what we're looking for because we want to make it easy for projects which meet our requirements and are consistent with our vision. So that if you meet all of those things, it's administrative process. We have included a unified development review provision which would allow the joint planning commissions to give dimensional variances and special use permits. Again, we're trying to create a place where the development is easy, transparent, efficient. We included design standards. We have parking standards, lighting, building design, and signage. We have updates to the use table. That's at the end of the text ordinance. We've added a column for Coates Thread. So it's just, we're adding a column to our existing use table and our zoning ordinance for the separate districts. And we had gotten some calls from some of the existing businesses in the district concerned about their ability to continue to operate within the district. Just to clarify, anything that's shared is grandfathered. The other thing that we did intentionally was to call out the lighter industrial uses as uses that we would like to continue to expand and even to bring into the district. You know, I think manufacturing has changed in scale and scope over the last five to 10 years. And so there's a little bit also melding in like the artist studio and industrial. So we do definitely want to make sure that people who are doing light industrial, so long as it's not something that creates, you know, nuisances in terms of noise or odor, that we want them to be able to continue. You know, these are industrial buildings. If they are continuing to be able to make the work, we definitely support that. And we talked a lot tonight about the inclusionary zoning element. So we did include a provision after working with our affordable housing partners for mandatory 10% zoning for projects that have 22 units or more. After we introduced this, we had had some conversations locally with some local developers and, you know, people who are developing in the city already. And they had concerns about that provision. The council had similar concerns. But beyond that, we also were made aware that there is a state law that talks about the form of the affordable, inclusionary affordable housing ordinances. And for reading it, we were under the assumption that our proposed ordinance is not consistent with state laws. So we asked for an opinion from a solicitor to be certain. And we did get one back, and he's in agreement with us that as proposed, because we don't also include some sort of incentive in terms of, you know, density bonus or something like that, that our ordinance is inconsistent with state law. I can read this if you would like.
Just repeat that it is or it's not.
It is not. Because our proposal is a mandatory 10% affordable. And we don't marry that with a benefit in terms of development incentive or a tax incentive or some other provision that is included with the ordinance.
So this doesn't comport with the state law that provides for including every zoning, number one?
That's right.
How did the language, you talked about roughly five sentences. You talked about 10 to 15 years of dialogue. All the work we're going to try to streamline and make uniformity for all the zone uses and dimensional things, parking and everything else. How much dialogue was done on this section? This inclusionary housing section? How did it wind up in?
So, that's a complicated question with a complicated answer, but I'm going to do my best to try and answer it. We, you know, when we started to talk about what the zoning would be and to talk not just about zoning, but planning for redevelopment, we understood that protecting the neighborhoods, stabilizing the neighborhoods that exist out there, which are not part of the TOD but sit on either side of them, is an important thing. That was always something that we, the city of Central Falls, felt strongly about. Through conversations with affordable housing advocates and also some members of the council, you know, we talked more about the affordable housing, the inclusionary zoning tool as something that would be the most appropriate. So, you know, it didn't happen through our work with our TOD group and our consultant. Like, so our consultant helped us with the zoning. It did happen a little bit outside of that process. But, you know, I don't want you to think that, or I don't want the council to think that, you know, stabilizing the neighborhoods and protecting the existing residents wasn't something that we were considering. But that we did not necessarily look at this inclusionary zoning tool as the most appropriate tool to do that.
Councilor Redd. So I have a question. So, mandating this idea at 10% would be against state according to solicitors and also against the law?
Not exactly. So mandating it, but without including incentives.
Okay. What if we did 10% citywide, would you still be able to set up incentives?
It's the same thing. So it, like, what the state law says, and I can share this with you. It is actually pretty clear what it says. It's that you can do it, but you just have to also offer some sort of offset and incentive.
And how does that play into the law that says we have to have 10% of formal?
So, it just, it gives us guidance or it gives us how our ordinances have to be structured. So, we can have the mandatory 10% inclusion, but it has to include a benefit to sort of, I guess, they're looking to outweigh.
A benefit to the developers?
Yes. To offset whatever, you know, clauses they have. The state law is really short. You know, I'm sort of like in thinking about, you know, why that's in there. But what it actually says is that you can do it, but that you have to offset it.
Well, then there's another state law that says you have to have.
They are not saying you have to have the inclusionary zoning.
No, but it says you go to meet the 10% requirement of the law.
That section, that, you know, policy isn't clear on how committees have to do it.
That requires on the community, not on the developer.
The 10% is, yes.
10% overall.
Overall, right.
And this case, much like with 99% of other inclusionary zoning statutes across the country, it requires that there's some sort of offset.
Yes.
We heard earlier tonight about low income tax credits. We heard about density, bonuses, things of that nature. That's what that's taught for, right?
Yes.
So how did we wind up with five sentences that simply just thrust the mandate on this with no offsets to comport the state law? No dialogue about what it might be? No dialogue about what we're hoping to accomplish? I, when this was, and correct if I'm wrong too, I was completely surprised and taken off guard at the committee meeting. But since then, I've done a lot of research. This is a 13-page document that the city of Chicago developed when they were considering doing this. This is their 13 pages of what they want to know before they even go down that road. We didn't do 13 pages. We didn't do the 27 pages that they did there at. We did five sentences that only doesn't even comply with state law either, right? Is that really what you're telling us?
Yes.
So let me just jump in. So my question is, so how do we drop the ball on that? Why didn't we have known that earlier? Like, we're just talking about it now as we're doing this, but we shouldn't have the research about that?
Right. So we were looking at some of the affordable housing ordinances in other communities around. And not all of them have that. So, you know, you're right, you should have caught it, absolutely. We were also working with a lot of the affordable housing advocates. So we're working under the assumption that there's, you know, that all of us had some level of understanding about what, you know, what we could and couldn't do in terms of the inclusionary housing. So, we did.
Right?
Yes. We based it on one of the other upper down communities, one of the few around the communities that also passed the law.
In that community, what is their incentive? What do they have on that?
They don't have an incentive. Jean can talk about this. This actually is provenance. So we were using that ordinance as a model. But I think with the timing of when this state law that requires this offset came in just after they had passed theirs. So it was our assumption that their ordinance was consistent. And that could be something that we could use as a model.
Predate that in state law?
Yeah. They both were passed in 2004. I think the sprawl ordinance was passed early 2004. And then the law was passed in 2004, right?
So you said that all along it's been a goal for affordable housing. It's been some sort of goal. This is not planning's preferred mechanism? Is that what she said earlier?
That, yeah. I mean, we, I don't really want to delve deeply into, you know, how affordable housing, you know, that we prefer, that affordable housing get addressed here. Because it's so complicated, you know, it's difficult. I think, like you're saying, Chicago has 25 pages of, you know, backup. So, you know, I also don't think that zoning necessarily is the only tool that we can use to support the neighborhoods that exist around the train station. You know, we had some conversations with Central Falls about, you know, working with them on their homeownership program where, you know, maybe we offer a free commuter rail ticket to residents to go through the homeownership program and buy a house in some of those inputs, which would, you know, be advantageous for them to connect them to the train station. Because, you know, like all the folks tonight, we don't want to create a district that's all the offer or not integrated for the rest of the community. You know, I do think that, you know, it's a very complicated issue. You know, it might be better served to take a step back and look at what the tools that are available above zoning to try and stabilize the neighborhoods. And I think that residents of Pawtucket do get benefit from this $50 million, you know, public investment.
I mean, if I may too, there are, I mean, there are complicated ways of addressing this. I mean, as Sue alluded to, we did have to include some of the original ordinances. These policies and the water charges, you know, they were different. In addition to the 10% affordable, they also allowed for income contributions. It also allowed for construction on site. There are different ordinances that take that approach. There are different mechanisms to do that. I do think though, that however, this one does have a fundamental flaw in that it doesn't have that offsetting benefit associated with it. And in these provinces, we had did predate the, that particular state law that requires that there be that offsetting trade-off. Sue, some, Kamata, I think this is something that the council chooses to pursue, some type of inclusionary or some side of, some type of mechanism to address affordable housing issues. There are a variety of ways of addressing that. Certainly, we want to make something that we're doubly sure is fully in performance with the state law and also give a look at best practices. I would, however, have to acknowledge that as drafted currently, this is not one that records the minimum that we got from recent solicitors. Would not withstand any sort of legal challenge from the developer should we proceed with the best.
So does he make recommendations?
His recommendation is that he basically suggests that the rest, the remainder of the ordinance could proceed as drafted. He didn't find any sort of legal clause in it as it's drafted now. But this particular ordinance would not withstand a legal challenge that it's clearly not in performance for that aspect of state law.
We wanted to address something like this, absent this language.
Yes.
Over to you. What's the best path to proceed now? You said there's dozens of different ways to skin the cat. This clearly five sentences of nothing but mandates and nothing else. Certain doesn't do it, at least in my opinion. What would be the best path this council wanted to address affordable housing issue in that district?
I would suggest, if that is clearly the council's direction, that you would, I would suggest passing from us with the ordinance and directing the staff to come back to the city council with a recommendation for a way to address affordable housing and making sure that it's fully in performance with state law. And perhaps we could present to you with a manual of choices that the city council could select from. Whether it's inclusionary zoning, combined with some of the other tools that are allowed for in state law. And we could do some, perhaps, some comprehensive research and share that with the city council so that you can really advise yourselves.
Councilor Redd.
Thank you. I'm hoping you can clear something up for me. We, these have been conversations that have been ongoing for eight months. As Kentucky said, in Falls, development, I've been in some of those meetings, Councilor Redd, and then other meetings. So I'm perplexed by this language and take a step back and consider our options. But as you say, you've been working on this for nearly 15 years, right? And the conversations that I've been involved with stretched nearly a year. So, it strikes me as odd that this was hissily and poorly put together in the aftermath of so many conversations. It's that it won't stand up to a legal challenge and that this idea of stepping back is emerging right now. We have been stepping back, that's the point, right? And there is great desire to see the rest of this move through. That's something I understand. These are tools to help our community develop. What I cannot be convinced of though is that this is going to be taken seriously if it in fact becomes de-downed from the rest of it. Because frankly, that's not what I see.
Councilor Redd.
So, it seems we're like, we're at a point where we have to amend this this evening and remove that language on the inclusionary housing to pass to all ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. We can also amend the ordinance in 90 days after we figure out how we can put this language in that meets, stands for legal challenge.
There are some issues associated with that. And one thing we don't have, Sue, that under Kamara rooted to, we do have some non-conforming uses that we're a little bit concerned about proceeding. By clarifying what are the existing uses that are permitted and not permitted, we also kind of clear up that status of the use schedule. This is more than just, I mean, one of the things that I think that we try to, we're super much emphasize is that this is not just a district that is about residential development only. We also have a mixed-use district that encompasses industrial uses. We have also got inquiries about uses that are associated with storage, for example. Currently, under the existing zoning, that's permitted use. So they're a little concerned about delaying.
Just, just. The ordinance is flawed in what areas and then just the inclusionary housing?
Not that we're aware of.
Well, what are you saying, what were you just saying about other uses?
No, we're concerned that if they were to delay by 90 days, there are uses that are currently allowed.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying delay has to go to the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm saying that spend 90 days and we could go back and amend it and include the language that we have used. the language that we have, you people.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay. No, I wasn't suggesting we, I'm suggesting that we, you're very sincere people tonight, come down here to talk about.
And I would certainly think that 90 days would be more sufficient time to bring something back to town.
And do you think, Jean, for the next council meeting, we can have a list of communities that require inclusionary zoning?
Absolutely.
And then it would have to be a priority if you had a department to figure out what language we need to put in here to amend, if this goes forward this evening, amend this, put the language back in.
We've already, we've had some thought.
Councilwoman.
And along with that, the incentive programs that those particular cities and towns use to allow for the inclusionary housing aspect of the ordinance. I mean, obviously, it's a major concern of the residents of the city of the Tucket that affordable housing is a main component of our city moving forward. But we obviously want to make sure that the ordinance passes muster in, you know, at the legal level, so that we can challenge it once we do address it or pass it or not. But we need to make sure that it's everything all ducked and rowed, rather than just asking something that a developer that's invested millions of dollars in the project is gonna hire the best legal team that they can find to shoot us down and waste, and wasting valuable time.
We share the council's desire to have something that's done expeditiously and that's done in a year.
Thank you. Gee, that's kind of the line of what hearing suggested. Now, that there's no urgency of doing it tonight. We haven't had, nobody else but two councilmembers apparently have had any, have been privy to any single conversation about this issue. This is a citywide issue, it's not a district-wide issue. And I think for the most part, two weeks ago tonight was the first time anybody heard of this. And that's why we're here tonight. I think this was an irresponsible path that we're down, not cast in blame. But we are here now because there was no dialogue. We've got five sentences that have put people on a fever pitch about this issue, looking at it like it's anti-affordable housing, but it is not the case. And we've worked with the PCFD numerous times. Council of the Brant District, the Brant Street, City of Eugene, we always approve to go forward to these things. So, the council's not anti-affordable housing. We're anti-haphazard. You know, and that's what we have right here. It's not compliant with law. It's five sentences when everybody else who has done this has had it. I mean, it's taken months and months and months, if not years, for those cities to develop something like this. They look at what their goal is, what the data is, what the marketplaces are. We just put five sentences and do it or else. It just seems very irresponsible to move forward like this, especially now with the fact that our own city solicitor says it's illegal. And I just, I think we're, you know, one.
Councilwoman.
I don't disagree with Councilperson in the fact that maybe it seems like we're going ahead too quickly and we're acting easily. So, then I would recommend, you know, holding off approval of the ordinance and bringing all the parties together, and then having that discussion at a committee meeting with, you know, all the stakeholders, affordable housing people, people from the community, we can sit down and we can have this conversation, even people from the other side of the city that are affected by the affordable housing issue. I really don't see an issue squeaking a little bit. Like, I don't see the necessity to pass this right now, because my fear personally is, and this is why some of the councilors we had is, much of this Tucket district isn't a district that I represent. So, my fear was that if we have these middle conversions coming in, and people from the community get priced out, we'll hear it's gentrified. I think that's why there was a need, you know, to have this conversation with planning, and I appreciate them for listening. But I do understand you, Councilperson, said that the council should be involved. And I think we need to get it aired out. But if we approve this tonight without the affordable housing in there, my fear is gonna take more and more and more time to get that put in, and you will see the justification take place in that area.
And I was saying, in fact, my suggestion was going to be that on advice of a plan that we move forward with, we strip that out. And we have an ad hoc committee, economic development, neighborhood improvement. This was put together for this very reason. I think that is the place where this topic should go, so that we can sit down and address. Jean said that within a certain period of time, she can give us, I think, different options or or moving of options or alternatives to do that. And I, I think that's precisely why we created that ad hoc committee, Council President created it, to do just that. It's more of a policy issue than it is an ordinance issue, than it is a zoning issue. But I, my thing, but I do, and with all due respect, I think the issue with approving it and stripping out the affordable housing, as Director Boyle stated that, if we don't approve it, they're worried because there's a developer that's gonna come in that goes against ordinance of what they're trying to do in that area. So, if we approve it, other developers are gonna come in and jump on and fill those losses, or fill those areas before we can put the affordable housing in there. And the justification that everyone is concerned about is gonna have.
You're the worst word optimism.
If I may, if we were to take this suggestion aparting that I would want some assurance, there's actually an assurance, not just in somebody's word, that we will be voting on a policy within 60 days.
Any questions?
Yeah.
No, no more questions.
Yeah, I don't know, 60 is, we heard 90 was one of those.
90 is, 90 would be fine, but what I do not want to do is kick this can down the road in a way that enables us to not take action on it. That is unacceptable to me. So, I recognize that you all worked really hard on the other pieces of this and wanna be supportive on the parts that we feel good about moving forward with. What I do not want to do is put this in the back closet and forget about it. And I would, I would want some mechanism in place that that doesn't happen if this would be managed.
So, I think maybe you can move to strike the language from this particular ordinance, and as part of that motion, that planning will come back within 90 days with proper language and needs to win to achieve the inclusionary.
Well, I don't know if that's necessarily the case. I think they're gonna come back with alternatives.
But there's a concern, concern, is that it won't come back. So, I think.
But I don't follow your headline. I'm just, I'm just saying they'll come back with a language. I think, I personally think the best way for us to do it is just like, you know, Chicago or Houston, if we look at it piece by piece. I think we should have a couple of different meetings. I'm only giving, that's called.
That could happen.
And then I have no problem if there's a 90-day limit, or 60-day, or 100-day, whatever it happens to be, that the ad hoc committee would come up with some sort of language. That still may not satisfy everybody, but at least it's not open-ended and Councilwoman, Councilman, in terms of the last.
So, would you be, would you be satisfied if we had a 90-day limit during which the ad hoc committee meets at least twice? It's gonna mean everybody moves at a rapid speed, but again, given that this has been a project for a long time and we have lots of very happy, experienced partners, that seems to me like it should be doable. Would that be acceptable?
Sure. So, what's your opinion? I'm a chair of the committee, you're on the meeting. We can schedule this frequently, possibly. Or frequently meet, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Those council, those, excuse me, those meetings that you're gonna have, the ad hoc committee are gonna be open to?
Yeah, they'd be just like any other, any other committee meeting.
Yeah, entire council.
Yeah, please, because I just, obviously, feelings, we're both with a lot of concern of people in the city from all points of view. They could definitely be involved in that conversation.
I think if the agenda for such of those meetings does not have anything to be voted on, is moving toward having something of that, that there's no problem with once three committee members weigh in or, you know, have it.
Listen, you have, anyway, to cover you, if you're gonna do that. Councilwoman.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, everybody can participate.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think.
Yeah, we're gonna be, okay, we're gonna call. Any more questions right now? The synergy. You good for that? Councilwoman.
What, what next to me? Could you just have the other cities and towns in the state that have inclusionary zoning?
And not just the state, maybe. What's that still?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, and just, that's not to get too far into it too. I just wanna caution you, like, to compare, because I'm in Boston, it may be not that helpful. I think we wanna be careful, try to compare cities that have similar demographics and similar income levels, because the market is different. And, you know, the 10% affordable needs a different thing in some markets versus higher markets, that's all. But, so, but absolutely, we'll find, you know, every affordable housing, inclusionary ordinance in Rhode Island, also we'll take a look to see if there's other, you know, similar communities in Massachusetts that we can assess as samples to.
I think there's two of your guys that have quite a bit of experience, career in the city. Both know what the competition, what they're hoping to accomplish. Knowing full well, there may be a couple of areas, you're not on a commission, not board of the committee. If you can shop the pencil, stop tomorrow, coming up with alternatives that also comport with the state law.
I think it's also very helpful. It's also very helpful hearing public comments too. It's a very, it's a very, priority as to what the folks are interested in accomplishing.
The council ask her, the councilwoman.
So, I totally agree with having these meetings to get more information, and especially from a specialist. So, I guess my question is, if we don't, if we strip the language today, and what is the consequence? What is the consequences if we don't pass anything today? We still hold these meetings to get more information?
You're asking if we don't pass the full ordinance?
Correct until.
Yeah, and I think, you know, both of us have heard from different developers about what their plans are. And, you know, since we've been working on this, there are certain, most segments of this ordinance, you know, outside of this inclusionary affordable housing section, have been things that all of the communities and all of the partners have been behind. So, we're all sort of in agreement about what the vision is for this area. We were working on it for a number of years. And so, you know, we understand what the vision is. We passed our comprehensive plan, which demonstrates what that vision is. And I just don't think that delaying for, delaying the passage of the overall TOG ordinance would serve, you know, our communities, where we've been out to the public a number of times talking about what we wanna see, and, you know, this is, this is our, you know, after two years, this is sort of like our final step in implementation. I just, you know, I wanna, I want to, you know, we want to implement the vision that we've been working on together for the last two years.
I totally understand that, but how much would that delay the process? If then, money's the.
I think, I think what they're saying is that they need this ordinance. And if we delay it till we get the proper language, I don't know. I don't think there's a reason to delay the ordinance.
Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say for the record, I'm really disappointed that this was presented to us. This was presented to us, it wasn't consistent with the law. But I'm very happy, grateful that you checked with the city solicitor, because I'm not about to vote on something that's not legal, consistent with the law. But I do want to be assured that this will be revisited in the 90 days, because we have a lot of folks speak on this, and it's an important issue. So, I appreciate the time, but we definitely have to revisit this issue in the 90 days. It's good.
Any further questions right now? Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak on this? You in the back first?
Thank you.
Give me an answer, please.
I will.